Good evening and welcome, and we will call the meeting to order. Thank you all for joining us. Right at the top, I would like to ask councilor's pleasure, can we have a motion to amend the agenda under unfinished business for us to revisit the resolutions for the opioid settlement? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Well, with that, we'll welcome everybody and say we'd love to begin our meetings with the pledge of allegiance. Gary Harris is here. Gary, if you will lead us in the pledge.
Present arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with terrific justice and sprawl.
Please be seated. If you'll please join us in a moment of silence, you can use this time for silent prayer, silent refraction, reflection to prepare for the meeting, or however you choose to use your moment. Thank you all very much. Council members, you all have the minutes from October 27th for our regular meeting. Do we have a motion to approve as submitted, or are there any changes that need to be made?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second? A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, we will open the floor for citizen comments on public matters. We'll ask that if you have a comment you'd like to make, come down to our podium, be sure to use the microphone, speak clearly into the microphone, state your name for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. And we are getting our three-minute timer up on the wall there. It's coming. So close. There we go. You got it. Well, that's three seconds. I thought it was gonna, there we go. All right. Gary, welcome.
My name's Gary Harris. I've lived in Radford all my life. Got a lot of friends, talked to a lot of people. And I'd like to ask the council to do what they have to do to get a forensic audit. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments that they would like to make?
My name is Brandon Warden. I wanted to bring up the, the school at McCarg. There's no crosswalk between the school and across 12th Street to get to Robertson, and just wanted to see what I could do about getting, getting something installed there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else have anything that they would like to share with us this evening? All right, seeing, seeing nobody else come up, we will close the citizen comments portion of the meeting. Council, we certainly have a moment.
Can we respond to that, though?
That's what I'm just getting ready to.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought we were getting right past.
Council, if you all would like to make a response to any of the messages that were brought forward?
Yeah, I, I would. I appreciate both of you coming up and speaking and telling us. I've saw there was quite a few concerns over the crosswalk, and I think that that's something that we can easily probably take care of. And Gary, I do appreciate you coming up, and I know that that's been a big topic of conversation for a very, very long time here. You know, so with that being said, I would like to make a motion that we instruct our city manager to send out RFPs for fiscal years 2020 through the current. And if we could get those out by November for us to further that conversation for consideration, I think we've talked about it, and I do think that that would give us an opportunity to know what that would look like.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? I will just say, I think it's perfectly fine for us to try to get RFPs to be able to see what's going on. Gary, I appreciate your comments very much, and I've heard from a lot of folks, I think all of us want to get to the bottom of everything that's occurred with our financial piece. I will say, you know, we've been making some changes over the last year. We have a new city manager, we have a new finance director who will be starting here in a few weeks. One of the things I'd hoped to be able to do was to get the right people in the right places for us to be able to make those kinds of decisions and figure out what's going on. And sometimes, while it's frustrating to wait, if we don't put things in the right order, we end up making a bigger problem than we solve. So I think, you know, now is perfect time to see what we can get and what it would cost us, and then we'll figure out where we go once we have some more folks working on this role and going in place like that. But that's all I'll say on that matter. All in favor? Please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Back to the crosswalk a minute. What, what, is there no crosswalk, or?
So, we're gonna talk about this a little later in the meeting when we get down to manager comments. I was gonna ask the chief to come up and talk about it just a little bit. I, I don't know if you saw your email, I had reached out to everybody on Friday, I guess, about this because several people contacted me about it. There used to be a crosswalk at McCarg, right at the entrance to the school, but they've done a lot of traffic changes there, so I think there's a bigger discussion that needs to take place. And we'll ask chief to come up once we get through the rest of the meeting. But thank you for bringing it to our concern, we are aware of that, and I try to make everybody know that we talk about it a little bit this evening, but the main thing is public safety, working with the school system, figuring out how it makes sense with all the changes that have happened at McCarg will likely be the thing. So, good news is, we're gonna talk about it, the bad news is, that may be about an hour from now as we go through the rest of the meeting and go from there. So, we will get to it. Well, that closes the citizen comment on public matters time. At this time, we do have our economic development director, Kim Repass, who's here with us today. She's gonna give us a little report on what's happening in the city and what she's been working on. Kim, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I wanted to give you guys an update on where we are with the concrete removal at the West Commerce Park, or known as the Foundry, which I have problems always referring it to the West Commerce Park, it's always gonna be the Foundry, so sometimes I find myself... Is it up? There we go. But as you know, we received a $3.5 million grant from the state of Virginia on the old Foundry property. It consisted of two different phases. The first phase was the soil removal. A small piece on the Foundry just had some higher concentrations of lead and PCBs that DEQ really wanted us to get rid of and bring in some fresh soil, so that was taken care in January of 2025. So we're now moving into the Phase Two component of this grant, which is the concrete removal. This is sort of a better picture of that concrete pad, it's 250,000 square feet of pure concrete. Our engineers, Haley and Aldridge out of Richmond, did some coring before the invitation to bid went out. It had varying depths of concrete, anywhere from 15 feet to, we really don't know, bedrock. But it is a very thick concrete pad, it's over 100 years old, so we knew that we were, this was gonna be a, a small feat. At the beginning of this process, I just started taking a bunch of pictures as, as they moved forward with this process. This is, we started on the western side of the property, which was closest to the recycling, which used to be the older piece of the other Foundry. So they're working their way back east. So just some, some pictures of, of the massive amount of concrete that HT Bowling, our contractor is, is kind of dealing with. This was on the west side of the property moving east, so you can kinda see just a bunch of busting up concrete. The process is really kind of, pretty kinda neat. They bust up this concrete, and then they put it in this grinder and grind it up into smaller pieces. A lot of the concrete is being shipped off to the New River Resource Authority, other is used for putting back in these massive holes that we've had. So, a little bit of dirt, a little bit of concrete gravel, we're having to stay with a certain grade that has been set forth from our engineers, but we're using dirt and we're using some of this concrete that we're busting up into smaller pieces, it's being used as fill. So it's keeping our costs lower than shipping out all of the concrete.
Kim, are we getting anything from New River Resource Authority for the concrete that's going there?
We are.
Okay.
We are.
Fantastic.
Yes, we're, we're getting a little bit of a break.
Right.
Absolutely. This is just a massive amount of machinery down there. I mean, every day, I'm kind of amazed at, at the work that they do, I can't say enough amazing things about HT Bowling. Fantastic company, that is just really been fantastic to work with. But just another picture, picture of, of this massive amount of machinery onsite, busting up this 250,000 square foot pad. This is sort of to the east of the property looking west. All of that shrubbery has been taken out, you can kinda see a little bit of a, of a grading on the left-hand side that's going down, but this is the concrete pad. This shows basically they're, they're grinding up the concrete and then leaving it in certain places so that they can fill, and then some, some are being shipped out. This is probably one of my favorite pictures. We, they've incurred massive amount of concrete, right? One of the interesting facts that we've learned is that some of these footers are 15-foot deep, and some even, even deeper. The walls and the footers that are near the southern part, which are near the train tracks, are actually deeper than the footers near the north side, near the river, which was really kind of interesting. The footers that they're finding in the interior, which is this, in the center of that 250,000 concrete pad, are encased in five-foot concrete bearings. So massive amount of concrete that they're finding. And some of this is, they've, they've gone all the way down to they've hit bedrock. So it's incredibly deep. So I just thought this was pretty interesting. I actually got this picture right before they started continuing to bust up that concrete, so I wanted to grab it really quick. So this sort of shows you the amounts of concrete that's being removed. In August, we started August 20th, so 619 tons of concrete was removed. In September, 3,944, and in October, 7,083 tons, for a total of 11,647 tons of concrete being removed. Now, that doesn't include what we have ground up and are keeping onsite for fill. So, pretty, pretty massive. And that's through October 31st. Some of the documents that we've been working on behind the scenes to make this move forward are important to the redevelopment as we move forward, looking at prospects. The VRP, which is the voluntary remediation program, this is a state-level initiative supported through the DEQ that's designed and encouraged to help us investigate and clean up the contaminated properties. And this particular was the landfill. I entered into this application on February 13th of 2023. This was right after the city purchased the property not long after, and this is a program that DEQ really emphasized that we enter into, so that they basically supported us and held our hands through this entire process. A lot of this was based on inspections. They gave us a risk assessment of the landfill, they came out several times a year and inspected the cap that was on the landfill as well, as well as the monitoring wells that surrounded the entire landfill. October 31st, which was last week, they provided a certificate of satisfactory completion on the landfill. This is really quite huge. We've been working on this since February of 2023. All work has been completed, and DEQ has deemed that no further action is necessary. So this is huge win for us as we move forward. The certificate was approved by the EDA on last Thursday, November 6th, and signed by the EDA chair, and the city manager will sign pending approval by city council this evening, which I think is on your agenda. This is a picture that shows the landfill, it's pretty massive, you really can't see the depth, but when you're standing on top of that hill and looking over the sides, it's a nice little sliding hill. It is nine acres, so it's pretty massive. The cap is obviously underneath that foliage, the grass, and the monitoring wells are located along the perimeter of the landfill. So this was a huge win for us. It was a $4,000 fee to enter into the program, and on November 1st, we were gonna be charged another $4,000, so that tells you how close we were in getting this approved and pushed through from DEQ so that we did not have to incur those additional costs. So huge win for us. The second document that's really important is the UECA, I'm sure you've heard us talk about that internally. This is the Uniform Environmental Covenants Act. It's a state-level law that allows for creation and enforcement of environmental covenants on real property that deals with contamination. Basically, it's a legal framework, and it provides us land use restrictions and obligations on this property. It's implemented at the state level, and is often part of brownfields or any environmental cleanups. The importance of this document is that it will follow the deed of the property, so this will be recorded along with the VRP certificate. And it's, it's very important that this is completed because as prospects start coming in, if it had happened before this was in place, we would have had to say, oh wait, we have to finish this document because the land restrictions are very important, obviously, to be in place for, for this property. So the fact that this is completed is huge. It was completed by Mike Beddaw and reviewed by DEQ. The EDA approved this document as well and signed by Abram Williams on Thursday, November 6th. The document, along with the VRP certificate, will be filed with the deed. I think while the general use of this property, we, we want to be able to move forward and offer any kind of uses for this property when we look at cleanups, but unfortunately for a property like the Foundry, it just is not possible. This property will remain industrial, that's the covenants that's been put in place from DEQ and from a state level. So I've heard a lot of different rumors about different things, and, and while certain things would be awesome for the city, it's just not gonna be feasible for this property. And so the UECA document that's put in place for covenants and land restrictions is, is what's gonna help us move forward on this property. So two big, huge wins for us that happened last week that Mike, poor Mike, he's not here tonight, but he just worked so hard on these documents and, and lots of phone calls and Zoom calls with DEQ to get us to the place we are now. So huge wins for us behind the scenes and continuing to move forward with redevelopment. VRB, VBR SP Next Steps, this is the grant, so we're moving forward with the concrete removal. VDP has stated that if we are under budget, which we are, which is great news, they want us to continue to remove the asphalt that is on that property, which served as the parking lot for the Foundry workers that were here. So this kinda shows the outline of the asphalt property that's to the east of the concrete, which sits in between the, the landfill and the concrete pad. It's 82,000 square feet, it is asphalt, so it's, it's not that deep, so we don't have to worry about any of those types of restrictions that we're dealing with on the concrete slab. The contractor has submitted a cost estimate for the, for the asphalt removal, and the cost remains under budget still. So we are, we are in a good place. I'm feeling less heartburn moving forward. Removal will begin immediately following the concrete removal. I think as we were moving forward on the concrete, being cautious about providing information too soon to the contractor. The contractor knew that this was gonna happen, it was, it was in the agreement that if we remained under budget, that this was going to be removed. Our engineers have been onsite and, and prepared from the very beginning that this was going to be moved forward, but making sure that there were no hiccups, I think, were very important. You never know when there's change of orders and, and all of those things, so we have been very, very blessed and very lucky to, to get to where we are at this point, still remain under budget and have that asphalt removed, so that's, that's exciting. I primarily wanted to update you on the, the concrete and where we were for the, for the removal, but I did wanna provide a little bit more of updates of kind of what I've been doing really for the last week, seems like so much is, is going on, but one of the things that we've been doing, the EDA has been doing, and, and upping our, our, our marketing properties in the city of Radford. And one of the things I wanted to mention with, with the Foundry is that it continues to be marketed through a state level, which is imperative. It is on their website, it's on their radar. I am receiving information from the state from various prospects, and how that works is prospects will reach out to the state, and VDP will recognize those properties that fit their criteria. If the Foundry is one of those sites, they will send me an email and say Project X is interested and have additional questions. At that point, I will answer the questions and send information back. Obviously, at this point, we, we've been eliminated, but the good, the good thing is that they're throwing our property out there. It's important, and it's on their radar, and I think that's, that's where we are. We're not finished with the cleanup, and so they're constantly putting the Foundry out there for prospects to move forward in the future, which is a good sign. One property is on the corner of Wadsworth and Rock Road at 1746 Wadsworth Street. It's a little over an acre and zoned B1. And the other property is at Route 232, which is right off Exit 105. And just on Friday, these two signs were installed on both of those properties, really kinda upping our, our marketing efforts here. So we're really excited about that, I've already, already received some emails and calls, so it's, it's great news. We're excited to get those properties out there. These properties are also being marketed on LoopNet and CoStar, which is the world's largest commercial real estate website. So LoopNet is actually free, but CoStar is being paid for by the EDA to really put our properties out there. It's, it's more of a methodical analytic data approached website in CoStar. So both of those are listed on both of those big, on both of those big websites. Current objectives, obviously, this is not everything, but sort of in the past week, this just kinda caught my eye, I wanted to, to tell you. The East Main Revitalization Grant, which I know has been on your radar, it has now been extended for a year. I'm still updating some information and providing DHCD with some information that they've requested, but that's a, that's a big win for us. It's December of 2026 is what we're looking at, so as we begin to move forward with procurement in the spring, so we're excited that we receive that extension. A couple buildings in Radford is Applebee's and Moog that I wanted to touch on a little bit. I think in economic development, there's, there are certain things that go on behind the scenes, and there are certain things you can't talk about in the public, and you get so close to certain prospects, and then it feels like a kick in the gut when they, you know, turn around and say, we, we just, we just, it just falls through. With the Applebee's building, I had one that was so close, so close, and there was an option on the property, and, and they pulled out a week before. And in economic development, that's just unfortunately the way it goes, and, and I think those are, those are wins, but then, you know, it's like, ugh, but you keep moving. And so, Applebee's has been sold. I have been talking to that individual, and I feel very excited and promising for its future. The Moog building was also sold. I, I've been told there's some investment there, I'm not sure what that looks like at this point, but excited to see where that goes as well. A couple Go Virginia grants that are going on right now, one is a site selection that, Go Virginia Grant, that actually is, is gonna help us with the Foundry, and basically that is an NRVCS grant that is looking at some of the regions, like some of the properties in our region that need to move forward on that tier. So right now, the Foundry is at a Tier Two. Once this concrete is removed, it will be a Tier Three, and so there, there are some, some studies that need to be done, not, nothing that's out of the ordinary that a lot of other localities aren't dealing with right now, but this Go Virginia Grant is gonna help us move into a Tier Four, hopefully. Tier Five is shovel-ready. So that's also exciting. The EDA is having conversations with New River Community College regarding the ACE program. I think they see the value in continuing to fund that program, it's, it's a very important program. And one conversation that we've discussed is fundraising opportunities, right? So what that looks like on a yearly basis, and, and what we can do to continue to help fund that program. The EDA continues to fund the POP Grant Program, which has been incredibly successful. The total dispersed to local businesses is 109,785 to our local businesses. That's amazing. The fact that local businesses are improving their facade and reaching out, that grant caps out at $5,000, so you can imagine the total number of businesses that have reached out and received this grant. It's, it's fantastic, and it's fantastic that the EDA continues to fund this program. Also, the planter program, which are the planters that are sitting inside of, or outside of businesses all over Main Street, that was a planter program, that was part of the POP program that the EDA had years ago, but we're starting to partner with the horticultural program at the high school. And this has been going on, I think this is the third year now, but the idea is the horticultural program will grow these plants for a year. The EDA funds helps supply the soil, the seedlings, and they grow all year long in their greenhouse, and then in May, they take a trip to all of our local planters in front of our businesses and plant the flowers that they've grown the entire year. So it's a fantastic opportunity for the EDA to partner with the high school, and it's a great concept that the, the high schoolers are able to, you know, be able to plant something that they've worked on all year long. So it's definitely a give-back, and, and they have ownership in that, that they're improving the storefronts of our local businesses. One last thing, I definitely wanted to give a shout-out to my EDA board, Abram Williams' Chair, Steve Harvey Vice Chair, Jeff Cumberland Treasurer, Caroline Gaskins, Justin Mosby, Barbara Turk, and Keith Weldon's. I can't say enough fantastic things about them, they are fantastic board, I am blessed to be a part of them. I call them my Get It Done Crew. They are very smart, intelligent men and women who value Radford and want to make a difference in Radford, and I am so thankful to them for the hard work that they've put into the Foundry and all the other initiatives that they've been a part of, and for definitely supporting me in my role. So, thank you to my board.
Kim, what's, what's the schedule for getting all the concrete up? Is there a projection?
So right now, it's January 20th, there's a couple padded days in there for inclement weather. Grant closeout is due February 8th.
Okay, thank you. So on that, first of all, thank you so much for this presentation, for all the work you're doing, thank you to all the members, to Abram and all the members of the EDA. I did have a question about the asphalt, because at one time with the concrete, I know we were gonna try to level things and use some of the concrete as a, a base. Is the asphalt so damaged that it can't be used as a base for repaving with another parking area or something?
Correct. So at this point, it has been tested by Haley Aldridge. It's not terrible, but they're also suggesting that it not be reused around the city. So if it's stockpiled, they don't wanna see it used near schools, they want, don't wanna see it used in neighborhoods, that type of thing.
Because of the material that's in it?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, I understand. I had just thought that we were gonna try to reuse as much onsite as we could. as much on-site as we could.
So we are using it on-site as the base, depending on how deep some of them, as long as it doesn't affect the grade. So we're grinding up that concrete and putting it back with dirt. And then there's a four-inch topsoil on top of that. So it's being reused as much as we can.
Fantastic. I did want to point out two things with something you mentioned. Both the Moog building and the Applebee's building weren't owned by the city. I think both of them had been EDA projects in the past, but we're marketing them on behalf of other owners. And of course, whatever happens with that, those are in private hands. But thank you for continuing to do that work and work on that. I also had several people reach out to me after we posted the pictures of the sites that were available. And the biggest question is, what would those sites cost if someone was interested? Do we have a fixed price, or is that negotiable?
Negotiable. I think the EDA definitely wants to talk to individuals that are interested. For instance, I know the property at Route 232, which is right off of Exit 105. I think the EDA's vision and myself is that whatever locates there is going to bring investment into the city. We want to see tax dollars, people coming off the interstate, eating or grabbing gas, or something that's going to be viable to our community, that's going to bring back economic development to our city. And I think that's what's important for that route. But the EDA definitely wants to talk to anybody. So certainly, reach out. My information is on that board. We would love to talk to you and certainly discuss those prices with you.
I know people said Buc-E's or Wawa. And, you know, maybe, I don't think Buc-E's is going to do it, but you never know about a Wawa or something else.
I mean, it would be wonderful. It would be wonderful.
Fantastic.
Absolutely.
But thank you so much for all the hard work you're doing with all of this and the work with the West Radford Commerce Park. Do you think it would be possible, with some of the good news that we have, for you to put this presentation into some sort of a release that can go out following the approval? Because I think this is important for everybody to know. I appreciate the media being here this evening to share it. But I think this is really significant news for us to share, particularly the landfill closeout and all the other work, because that's been a long time coming.
It is. And those documents, you know, those aren't the things that are out there that people know about. But those types of things are putting checks and boxes that we've completed, things that are going on behind the scenes with Mike Bedsall, DEQ. We have a great DEQ team. They've really been wonderful to work with. But those are the things that are happening behind the scenes that people don't really see. But those need to be in place. When a prospect comes along, we're ready to go. It's no wait, you know, oh, let's get this UICA document completed. It's already completed. It's already filed and recorded with the deed. So those things that need to take place are already taking place, and we're ready to move forward.
Counsel, are there any other questions or comments?
That was a great presentation, Kim. Thank you. I mean, there's so much work going on behind the scenes, and this just shows that we are moving the needle, and it's getting closer and closer. I know a lot of hard work goes into that. So thank you to you and the EDA and Mike and everybody moving that along. This is a huge piece for our future. So thank you for all your hard work. One question I did have, as far as reimbursements go from the state, have we gotten any of those yet?
We have not. In fact, I had a meeting with them this morning, a Zoom call, and I've been assured that they were going to be pushed through this week. So that's great news. I think the state has also had some turnover. So some of the individuals that were in place, you know, are different than the ones that we dealt with earlier in this process. But I've been assured those reimbursements, those two, would be kicked out this week.
Perfect, yeah. Well, thank you so much. I know economic development is one of the biggest things that can move the needle that's not at the expense of our departments or, you know, our residents with tax increases. So a lot of work going in. Thank you for sharing. That was great. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. One is just out of curiosity. You were saying some of the concrete would go down 15 feet, if not more. Do they have to remove every single bit of that? Or do they have to take it down six feet? Or is there a guide? Or just whenever they find it, it has to be remediated?
It has to be removed. They've gone down about 20 feet. And some, when it goes down and hits bedrock, I mean, obviously, they can't get that far down. But they've definitely removed all the footers and all the concrete that they can. It's been documented where we can't go any farther, right? So there are engineering plots that have been made where, you know, when somebody comes in, I don't think anybody's going to be digging that deep. But it will be outlined where those footers were, and they couldn't go any farther. But it was pretty massive. And interesting, I think, for me to know that on the south side, close to the railroad tracks, that's where the massive amount of concrete was versus on the riverside. So a lot of concrete.
Another thing, I know we've talked about this before when I was out doing the tour of the properties. On the property on Wadsworth and Rock Road, it's zoned light industrial, is that correct? But it's really, I mean, we have now the industrial park, and it's surrounded by households and homes. Would it be beneficial to look at that zoning and maybe change it so that we can get residential in there?
I think certainly a discussion with the EDA as to what their, you know, what their thoughts are. I mean, I definitely think it's worth a conversation to have with them and see what their thoughts are.
Because that seems like a way that that property would move quickly. People are constantly looking for plots of land to build. And now that we're creating a space, I know before we were a little bit more protective because we really didn't have the room. But now that we do, it might be nice to see some more homes in that area opposed to industrial.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's definitely worth a conversation with the EDA.
EDA conversation.
Abram's here.
How many contacts have you gotten from the state on the property?
Oh, wow.
A ton? Has it been just a couple?
So they continue to reach out even before we own the property. And that was the biggest reason that we did not get to move forward is because it was not publicly owned. So we sort of got that out of the mix. I would say within the past year, maybe four or five.
Okay. So is there any recently that have come? Or have they all kind of been older?
Most recent was probably a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Is there any reason that we can't post the Commerce Park on the other two websites that the EDA properties are?
They are.
Or is it does have to be? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
They are on LoopNet and CoStar. Absolutely.
Great. And the two reimbursements that you said that we were hoping they were going to process?
Yes.
I just want to reiterate what the total is on those.
Each one of them were 336,727, I believe.
About $700,000.
$336,000 on each one.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you. You guys have done a great job. I appreciate it.
This has been a long journey. I mean, seven years of different looks at this and five years of working through it all. And you've made great progress here in the last two years. And thank you so much for all this hard work and know how challenging it really is.
Yeah, it's exciting. I mean, this is definitely, could be a game changer for Radford. And so it's exciting that we are so close, so close. And very thankful for the state that they provided this opportunity for us because that would be difficult and challenging otherwise.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
All right. Well, good news, good discussion, exciting things happening for the city. And I think we'll continue to come back and revisit that on a more regular basis. Right now, we are going to turn to a couple of proclamations. And first, we'll turn to Jessie Foster with our Veterans Day proclamation.
City of Radford Proclamation, Veterans Day 2025. Whereas the citizens of the city of Radford and the United States of America live in freedom because of the contributions and personal sacrifices made by those who have served and by those now serving in the armed forces. And whereas the words of the first Veterans Day proclamation signed by President Eisenhower still ring true, let us solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly on the seas, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage of freedom and let us reconsecrate ourselves to the task of promoting and enduring peace so that their efforts shall not be in vain. And whereas our nation has fought and continues to fight battles around the world for the ideals of liberty, freedom, and justice. And whereas Virginia is blessed to be the home of more than 620,000 veterans and tens of thousands of military families, and the city of Radford has veterans from every branch of armed service. And whereas we remember with gratitude those men and women who have served in the military with distinction and valor as sailors, soldiers, airmen, and marines. And whereas, as we reflect upon the enormous contributions made to our city, the Commonwealth, and country by the sons and daughters who served bravely to defend the principles on which our nation was founded, we also pay tribute to a new generation of Virginians who have chosen to serve in the United States Armed Forces and remain committed to sustaining the legacy of unyielding patriotism. And whereas, the city of Radford is incredibly proud and humbled to be the hometown of so many American heroes who serve as shining examples of honor, bravery, and service to our country. And whereas, we will endeavor to always honor the contributions and sacrifices of the millions who have over centuries served in the military, as well as those presently serving both home and abroad. And whereas, we are proud to recognize our country's and communities' veterans and extend the appreciation to those who wear the uniforms of the United States Armed Forces and serve on the front lines preserving freedom and liberty. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and Radford City Council that all citizens observe November 11th, 2025 as Veterans Day and appreciate the sacrifices and contributions of our veterans who fought for peace and defend democracy abroad. I would make a motion that we accept this proclamation.
Thank you, Jessie. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
We have Gary Harris, our former commander for the VFW here. Gary, would you come down and be our representative veteran to collect this? And we can give you and everybody who served a big round of applause. And to all of our veterans, whether you're present or online or out in the community, thank you for your service. We cannot thank all of you enough for the sacrifices you've made. We've been talking about economic development quite a little bit this evening. And one of our favorite components of economic development is Main Street Economic Development, particularly with Small Business Saturday, which is designated for November 29th, 2025. We have a proclamation regarding that. Seth?
City of Radford Small Business Saturday. Whereas the city of Radford celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, the city of Radford is a vibrant community with a business sector that includes several locally-owned small businesses. And whereas, small businesses are a vital component of the Radford economy by creating quality jobs for our residents, engaging philanthropic and civic concerns, helping to preserve key business corridors, and improving quality of life for our citizens. And whereas, the city of Radford values local small businesses and celebrates the diversity of goods and services they provide and the contributions they make to our community. And whereas, Radford supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, a significant amount of commerce across the United States is conducted around the Thanksgiving holiday. And whereas, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. And whereas, residents of Radford are being asked to support local small businesses on Small Business Saturday, November 29th, 2025, and throughout the year as a way to boost the local economy and strengthen Radford's small business community. Now therefore, the city of Radford, Virginia, does hereby proclaim November 29th, 2025, as Small Business Saturday and urges the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Mayor and counsel, I'd like to make a motion to accept this proclamation.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
And congratulations to all of our businesses for this wonderful piece. I'm actually going to ask that, Kim, even though you're not primarily with small businesses, you're our economic development director. Can we present this to you? I'll just add real quickly. In addition to Small Business Saturday, I know a lot of our businesses have special events going on throughout the month of November. There are some open houses, for example, at Meg's and Garrett's, I believe, coming up maybe this weekend, and some other activities. So check it out. Visit downtown Radford East and West. There's lots of wonderful opportunities to be able to do your holiday and Christmas shopping, to find gifts, and maybe a little something for yourself. And we hope you'll be sure to check that out. Moving on to our unfinished business. Counsel, at our last meeting, we approved the resolution for the lease of the fire truck with a term of approximately 10 years and a principal component of lease obligations not to exceed $905,000, which has been reduced, thank goodness, to $887,544.38 as the cost. And the obligation is still 5.7% per annum. Freedom Financial has requested this amendment to include the city manager as the primary signer of both the resolution and the lease agreement. Todd, do you have anything you want to share with us or add to that?
No. I was glad to see the amount that was reduced, and it is at 5.75 even.
Fantastic. Sounds good. Counsel, any questions? Or do we have a motion to go on and approve the lease resolution and lease agreement? Or do we need to do those separately? We can do them at one? Do we have a motion to approve the lease resolution, lease agreement, and authorize the city manager as the primary signer of both?
Do it.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, any discussion?
Todd, does that lease agreement still have a clause in it about we can't sell the truck for two years? Is that correct?
Yes.
Are we having a discussion about whether we're going to mothball it, if you will, and look to sell it? Or we're going to put it into use right away?
We haven't had those discussions yet, but we're going to.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all very much. We do have a vacant position for the senior liaison at the Recreation Commission. Linton Leary has shared his interest in serving. And Seth, you're our representative for the Rec Commission. Do you have any comment or any thoughts regarding that?
I think they look like a great addition. So no, I think that that would be the pleasure of the Rec Commission.
Do we have a motion to adopt Linton Leary as our representative for the senior liaison?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and our next piece, we're actually revisiting another component of the opioid resolution, and our attorney, Mike Bedsaw, contacted us, and we needed to go through and do a little bit of work. We also have to authorize the city manager to be able to direct and execute all documents necessary for our participation in all these bankruptcy plans and settlements. So we added this as an agenda item to revisit this. I don't believe we need to read the entire resolution, correct? There's nothing requiring us to do that. The gist of it is that we are adopting resolutions for the city council to authorize the city manager to execute the participation agreements for the city's participation in the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy plan and settlement of claims against the Sackler family, and also a resolution of the city council authorizing the city manager to execute the participation and agreements to the city's participation in the proposed settlements of opioid-related claims against Alvegen, Amneal, Apotex, Hikma, Endivore, Mylan, Sun, and Zitis and their related corporate entities. So council, any questions regarding that? If not, we do need to do a roll call vote. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. So first, let's, actually, that will be a motion for the resolution in the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy claim. Will you call the roll, Melissa?
Mrs. Archip, Mrs. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Gillespie?
Yes.
Mr. Wolford?
Yes.
Mayor Horton?
Yes.
And we don't need to do a second, a vote for dispense of a second reading, because in the resolution itself, part of the resolution is that we dispense with a second reading. If four affirmative votes were heard, and we did hear four affirmative votes. Can we have a motion to adopt the opioid-related claims against the variety of corporate entities and components executing this by the city manager?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second? A motion and a second, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Archip?
Yes.
Mrs. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Gillespie?
Yes.
Mr. Wolford?
Yes.
Mayor Horton?
Yes, and once again, the resolution contains a segment that allows for a dissolution of a second reading since we had four affirmative votes. All right, thank you all very much. That takes care of our unfinished business. Moving to new business, we do need to talk about our nondiscrimination policy update. To receive funding for the East Main Street project, the Department of Housing and Urban Development requires localities to meet nondiscrimination guidelines within their personnel policy. Those changes included childbirth or related medical conditions, including lactation. The required updated guidelines have been included. Council has had an opportunity to review those. Todd, do you have anything to add to that component? And Kim, since you're here, is there anything that you want to add to the update? So to be able to receive the grant that we have for the East Main revitalization, the grant of $700,000 from the Appalachian Regional Commission, we have to be on par with expectations with the Department of Housing and Urban Development regarding this nondiscrimination guideline. With that in mind, council, do we have a motion to approve the update?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And as we talked about earlier this evening, a huge barrier has been crossed, a huge goal has been reached with the Voluntary Remediation Program Certificate. The Voluntary Remediation Program is a state-level initiative supported through the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality designed to encourage and help facilitate the investigation and cleanup of contaminated properties. By overseeing this process, DEQ is able to ensure the cleanup activities achieve a satisfactory level. It's a safe place to work, it's a safe place to be around. The city of Radford entered into the program on February 13th, 2023 with the cleanup of the West Radford Commerce Park. DEQ has reviewed and accepted all the work that has been completed and determined no further actions are required with the landfill. A certificate, certification of satisfactory completion and remediation has been issued, and the certificate must be recorded and filed within 90 days. But we have to approve it first and authorize Todd Meredith as our city manager to execute the document. So council members, what is your pleasure regarding our Voluntary Remediation Program certificate? Do we have a motion to approve?
Yes, I think this is a huge accomplishment. Yeah.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And again, to reiterate what Seth said and what we've all said, this is a massive accomplishment. Thank you for the hard work. Thank you, Abram, and to the EDA for the diligence and the hard work. None of this has been easy, because every single step has just been a challenge from the time we first looked at this property back in the day, and we're excited to keep moving forward. Council, I have a request that we table the appropriation ordinance 1802.30. It's $751,932 of fiscal year 2025 encumbrances. We still have a little bit of work that needs to be done to that document, and we will revisit that in the very near future. Do we have a second on the motion to table the appropriation ordinance 1802.3?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Appropriation ordinance 1802.32 is the police department's award for the individual PSAP Education Program Grant from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management for fiscal year 2025 in the amount of $4,000. After the award letter, VDEM advised that they had increased the originally awarded amount from 4,000 to 5,000, and the AO for this grant was awarded in 1802.01. So we do need to consider that and approve the additional $1,000 for the Department of Criminal Justice Services grant. Council, do we have a motion for appropriation ordinance 1802.32?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Having heard four affirmative votes, we can dispense with a second reading if so desired. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to dispense with a second reading. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We also have some really good news for appropriation ordinance 1815.16 in the amount of $141,532 for fiscal year 2026, which we're currently in. It's the Victim Witness Grant Program, and they provide comprehensive victim and witness services to victims of all felony and misdemeanor crimes. The program has served the citizens of Radford and Floyd for over 20 years, and they strive to ensure that victims have the opportunity to make the course aware of the full impact of the crime, that victims are treated with dignity and respect while maintaining their rights to privacy, to inform them of their victim's bill of rights, and most importantly, that the victims are heard at all critical stages of the criminal justice process. The grant has one full-time person that works 40 hours a week in Radford City. The grant also has a full-time person in Floyd County. During fiscal year 2025, the Victim Witness Program served approximately 500 victims, and the fiscal 26 numbers are projected to be even higher than the past fiscal years. Council, do we have a motion to approve ordinance 1815.16 in the amount of $141,532?
I got a question before maybe we take the motion. It says that we put in $11,552.66 out of city funds?
I think that's budgeted for the victim program, yes.
Does that happen every year? Or what's, you know, we're looking to save money, and I guess I'm...
Chief, do you have any information you want to share on the Victim Witness Program? Or? Okay.
I didn't understand what he said.
That's run out of the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, so PD doesn't have any additional comment regarding that.
And I can't speak to years past. I don't know. I don't know if that's been required years past.
Well, I mean, it's a grant. I guess I'm questioning why we're putting the $11,000 in there.
Well, I will say that this is an incredibly important program that receives a massive benefit. As you see, it's a 10-to-1 grant, and very few of the grants that we receive have that minimal of a match that can usually be appropriated out of the already budgeted funds, and that's the way this is being addressed this year.
So this is a required match?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't realize that. I thought we were just putting in extra money.
No, and that we're required to do that.
All right, I didn't read that anywhere in there, so pardon me. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve AO 1815.16?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Having heard four affirmative votes, we can dispense with a second reading if so desired. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I got a little bit of reading I need to do, because the sheriff couldn't make it this evening, but Mark Armentraut and his team have done some great work with the Triad Program. They've received $2,500 in a grant money to provide meals, snacks, and incentives for the monthly Triad meetings for senior citizens. Mark asked if we could share just a little bit about this. Nourishing Connections: Monthly Meals, Snacks, and Incentives for Seniors. The sheriff's office was seeking to provide nutritious meals, snacks, small prizes, and meeting supplies for senior citizens attending monthly Triad meetings. These meetings serve as a vital source of social connection, support, and wellness education for our local senior citizens. The grant will ensure all attendees have access to healthy food while also creating a welcoming environment that reduces food insecurity, encourages constant participation, and promotes community engagement. Many of our seniors in the community live on fixed incomes, facing rising food and healthcare costs, and experience limited mobility. As a result, they're at greater risk of food insecurity, isolation, and lack of access to critical resources. Monthly Triad meetings offer more than just information on things like scams and fraud. They provide a safe and welcoming space for seniors to connect. So we are thrilled that Sheriff Armentraut and Sherry Fowler have been really critical in making this grant possible, and they have a 12-month timeline where they launch the grant-funded meals here in month one, continue the meetings with meals and snacks, and have feedback surveys in months two and three, four and five. There'll be a potluck luncheon on month six with enhanced prizes. Month seven and eight, regular meetings with more participation monitoring. Month nine, continuing the monthly meetings and outreach to churches for future support and sponsorship. Months 10 and 11 to continue the meetings and conduct a final survey. And then month 12, host a second potluck luncheon, review the outcomes, compile a report for the funders, and plan for continuation. The Triad Program has been a real gem for many years connecting our seniors, not only with our sheriff's department, but with many aspects of the city and community, and certainly has been a wonderful piece. So council, we have appropriation ordinance 1815.17 in the amount of $2,500 for the Triad Program. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
All in favor.
Please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Having heard four affirmative votes, we can dispense with a second reading if so desired. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've got some more good news going on here. The Teton Crest development located at the end of Chesley Street is complete, and the developer had installed the base layer and is ready for a top coat of asphalt so people can access their homes on a nice new road. The city subdivision agreement states if a new subdivision roadway meets VDOT requirements, the final asphalt top coat will be done by the city. The section is 21 feet wide and then 515 feet long. It's $24,000 for this asphalt for the Teton Crest subdivision. Todd, do you have anything you want to add?
It's important that we go ahead and complete the, putting the top coat on the road before the winter sets in. If we wait until spring, it's likely to damage the base layer, it could have potholes, so we need to get that done before the cold weather sets in.
Outstanding. Council, do we have a motion to adopt appropriation ordinance 1815.18 in the amount of $24,000?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
Just one question. This is great news. How far along are they are? Do we have any updates on the development as a whole?
Sir, did you have a comment or a question?
Can you make a comment, please?
Come on down to the podium.
The podium, please.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Manuel Razal, spelled R-A-Z-O. My wife and I recently moved here from California about 18 months ago. We love it here.
Good.
We moved into the Teton Crest homes in February. They were completed around maybe middle of June, early July, and my concern with the getting the asphalt poured as soon as possible is basically an aesthetic thing for me. You know, it's usually pretty seamless between, you know, asphalt and concrete, but that particular base right now is like two or three inches below the concrete that's poured there for like a semi sidewalk, this kind of curve for drainage. And we've been, everybody's been driving over that concrete for the last nine months, and it's starting to chip pretty severely in some places along that edge there. So if we don't get that done as soon as possible, I think we're just going to lose a little bit of the appeal and the aesthetics to the neighborhood. We like it, it's a great place, good, nice neighborhood, and like I said, for me, being from California and my wife, we love it here. Virginia is great.
Well, fantastic. Welcome to Radford, and thank you for your comments. I think we're ready to move forward with getting this taken care of.
Right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
So I believe we had a motion and a second. We were engaged in discussion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Having heard four affirmative votes, we can dispense with a second reading if so desired. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, Todd, what do you have for us this evening?
Well, first of all, first of all, I'm pleased to announce that the appointment of Trish Cox is the city's chief financial officer and director of finance. She brings extensive experience in public finance and a proven record of leadership. I think she's going to strengthen our budgeting, accounting, long-term financial planning, operations, and efforts, and just very excited to welcome her to our team and look forward to the positive impact that I know she's going to have on our operations. Second of all, I would like to thank all of our veterans for their service, and I hope that they have a good Veterans Day. And finally, I hope that everyone has a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir. Same to you. At this time, I am going to ask that Chief Holdaway come on down as part of the city manager section, and we talked just a little bit about MacGarg. I did reach out to the chief as well as members of council as this concern was brought up. And Chief, what can you tell us about public safety, access to MacGarg, and crosswalks?
Well, so it certainly is an issue up there, right? Like, I understand the complaint, but when you look at this from a micro level, there are a couple areas of concerns, and initially, you know, I don't want to voice for the school system, but my understanding is that after talking to our school resource officer, the idea is that once MacGarg was restructured and the parking lots were changed, that they're asking that student drop off and pickup can go in the backside off of Staples Street side where Josh Greenway is at as opposed to the front of the building. The 12th Street side is where the school buses are going in and out, and there's some concern about the inability for bus drivers to see some of these smaller kids walking in, so they don't want the pedestrian traffic to come in from the 12th Street side. And then the other thing that we look at, too, is that on Robertson Street side, when parents choose not to go through drop off, they're parking on the side of the street, and that also causes problems. I understand that there are some families that walk over from that community, but what we have seen historically is that parents are not wanting to sit in drop off. They park their cars in front of mailboxes, driveways, alleyways, and then it becomes a parking complaint. So, you know, we look at it from both ways. We certainly want to support what the school does and, you know, honor their requests. But ultimately, you know, we have had, you know, a parking enforcement officer work the crosswalks. We've had a crossing guard do it, and then we will try to get police officers out there, too. Our school resource officer is used at the front of the school for the drop off. You know, the school's wanting them there, and then typically on most days, you know, we try to cover the high school crosswalk and the Bell Heath crosswalk, and from a public safety standpoint, from what we've seen is that we don't see kids walking to MacGarg without parent involvement. But at Bell Heath, there's certainly kids that walk to school without parents, and that is a very heavily traveled road, especially during a school drop off. And then Walker Street is a hard intersection to begin with, but you see parents not involved and kids not paying attention, so we put two police officers there. So we don't mind getting up there and trying to staff it to help people across the street, but we certainly don't want to backset the school system in what they've asked for a student drop off.
Well, I guess, I think the biggest concern I have is for those that are true walkers to school, because that neighborhood, particularly right below MacGarg, used to be famous for having a lot of K through third grade kids that would go up the hill to walk to MacGarg. And I don't know if that's still the issue today, or how that folks are coming in and going that way. Is it possible that you and the resource officer and the schools could continue to have that discussion and maybe look and see, I don't know if a survey could go out of who are actual, like, legitimate walkers that are coming from the neighborhood versus someone that just pulls up on, say, 11th Street and wants to drop their kids off there rather than go through the pickup line?
Absolutely, and you know, with a little bit more time, we can collect a little bit more data and have a better definite answer for you guys.
I think that would be helpful. I mean, I don't think that any of us know, and there's been such a reconfiguration of the property. I know that's a challenge, but I also know there's a significant number of people that live in the neighborhood, whether they're coming more from Forest Park or they're coming more from right below. Really, it's the old Fairgrounds property that was down below there and trying to come through that way.
Absolutely, and give us a couple weeks and we'll look and kind of get a better grasp on where they're coming from and who's parking cars and who's actually walking.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. We appreciate that. And I hope that helps answer the question a little bit. I mean, I think we want to get this all taken care of, but I think one of the challenges is what's going to ultimately be the safest for the entire process and to figure that out. And, you know, we have a great chief, we have wonderful resource officers, and I know that they'll come back to us with some good recommendations for where we need to go from there. But I do appreciate you bringing up earlier this evening as well. Okay, council, what do we have this evening? Seth, what do you have to start us off?
Sure. I, too, would like to start by saying I hope all of our veterans have a great Veterans Day tomorrow. I know Jessie's a veteran, thank you for your service, and everyone else, and the gentleman and Gary. We've had, have a lot of veterans in this community and thankful tomorrow and every day for our veterans. I was able to tour McCarg and Bell Heath schools. Jesse was able to join me as well, and that was, it was great to see that and some of the things that they have implemented to newer schools, some of the programs. In one of the sixth-grade classes, they were actually doing robotics and making things we weren't doing. I think we were making ice cream kits in sixth grade, but they're doing robots now, so good for them. It was, it was cool. So really appreciated them taking the time to show us around, a lot of good things going there. Again, wanted to thank Kim for her presentation and to show all the good things that we do have going on. I know that we all want to be firing on all cylinders on economic development, and we're crossing off some huge benchmarks and some real successes, so glad to see that, and thank you again for that. Speaking of Kim, I was also able to attend Career Day at the DIS, and then Kim was able to relieve me. I told them, there was a lot of smart students, because I don't think I had anyone come up to ask me what my opinion was on running for council, because it was going to say, "Don't." No, I'm just kidding. But they, Kim came with a really good presentation and showed them, so it was a good time. I enjoyed that and seeing the kids. That's a good program that they have going. I also wanted to take the time, and I know that we're aware of it, to thank Abby Williams and Stifle for the scoreboards at the football fields for Bissett Park and Riverview. I know that Charlie's going to get something together for us. I drove down there and looked at him, and if he hadn't had the chance, they look great. And so we're just really thankful for his contribution. We have so many people in this community that care about the kids and care about Rafford, and so thank you to him and Stifle, and I hope that we can do something to recognize that. They look great. Then I'll echo with Todd Senneman, I'm thrilled to welcome back Trish Cox to serve as the city's CFO. To be able to add someone of the caliber of Trish to our team as we try to recover from this financial situation is invaluable. We are truly invested in her and her department's success. I think we all can stand behind that. I also believe that, you know, it shows that we are taking tangible, meaningful actions to address this. We're doing the things that need to be done, and I think Trish will be set up to be able to hit the ground running, and we're going to support her as she gets her feet back. We're very lucky to bring her on board. So with that being said, that's all I got.
All right. Thank you, God. What do you have this evening?
Well, I just want to follow up on Veterans' Day and encourage anyone listening and those that are here today to seek out a veteran or two or three tomorrow and thank them for their service to our country.
Thank you, God. Jesse, what do you have?
Well, of course, we're all going to say thank you to our veterans, so it's going to be redundant, but I think we all want to share our gratitude for their sacrifice. So thank you to all of our veterans. Some of the meetings I've attended in the last couple of weeks, I had a Department of Social Services meeting. Obviously, we are very well in tune with what's going on with food stamps, so we have emergency meetings on occasion to address that locally. I also had promised that I would get this local food pantry list, and I have four pages, and I want to ask our community to keep an eye on that list and keep us up to date. I'm wanting to get this on our government site as a resource, and if your church is doing something and it's not on here, please let us know. There's a lot of good people doing great things in silos, and we don't necessarily always know about them. So if there's any changes, additions, subtractions to our list on our government site, please reach out to us, because we may not have our finger on the pulse of every single one of those. So I'll let you guys have that. You heard about the elementary school tour. I will say exactly what Seth was saying, these children are doing amazing things, they are brilliant. I learned shorthand, so what else is there to say? You know, they are far, far exceeding expectations. Ivan made the joke that I was afraid that they were going to revoke my high school diploma after seeing what they're doing as elementary students. Very impressive, very impressive for our school system and all the students and the families that support them. I wanted to take a second, if you will indulge me. I have to brag on my husband for just a second. He has a foundation, Lunchpail Defense Foundation, and through the help of generous donations, George Jackson helped organize an event in Radford, and Kelly was in attendance, and apparently she won something, so that's exciting. But in one day in our local community, they raised just under $45,000. I'm very proud of them. And it's everyone in the community, it's the sponsors, the people who donate things, the people who come and are in attendance, the people who organize it, and a lot of that money will stay local and also will support our ACE program. So I just have to give a shout-out to him, because through his semi-retirement, he's really put his whole heart and effort into continuing, making this real viable for our community. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much, and thank you to Bud and the Lunchpail Foundation.
Proud of him.
We appreciate it. Kelly, what do you have?
I did, I'm excited. I can't wait to see what I want.
I can't wait to see, too.
And also, one of my lifelong goals is to learn how to write shorthand. My mother used to write our Christmas lists in shorthand, and I could never read them, and I thought it was so cool, so...
I can teach you how to write my name.
Yeah, that's one of my bucket list things, is to learn how to write shorthand. Thank you to Kim for the great presentation. It's really good to see what's been going on. I know that a lot of your work is behind the scenes, and so it may look like there's nothing going on, so it's nice to be able to get a beat on everything that you're doing, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate all of the EDA's work. You guys are two huge assets to our city. It was really interesting to hear about the planer program. I think that's the first time that I've heard about that. It's really great that we are resourcing our plants from young growers, so I really liked that a lot. Yes, thank you to all of our veterans. I'll echo everything that's being said. I have several in my family and friends that are serving right now here in our country and abroad, and I'd like to thank them and their families for everything that they go through during their spouse's service. The, we went down to the Halloween Trick or Treat Trail, which was a huge success. Everybody was really excited to have all the kids there. There was some really great tables. I want to give a shout-out to PR Sturgils, they had one of my favorite, where you stick your hand in the box, and there was somebody in the box giving candy. I thought that was really cool, and it was nice to see the kids react to that. And the popcorn stand and the cotton candy person that was making, and it was just a really good, really good event. And all the RU students that came out and completely filled that parking lot beside the law office, so that was really fun. I have a joint commission meeting tomorrow, so I'll talk about that when I come back in December. I definitely want to welcome Trish back to Radford. I think she's going to be a huge asset, and she's going to be able to help everybody involved on the, you know, behind the scenes, get everything done. And I really am glad that we are, you know, have some documented movement for the audit. I am an auditor for a living. I manage the audit department for a local bank, and I work every single day with outsourced auditors. And it's not a fast process. There's a lot of items to gather, especially if we go back that many years, and I know that those things will be negotiated on what's the best timeframe to look at. But it's also easier to pull those things when you're already ready, already pulling those things. So I know that we've been getting documents ready for our upcoming audit. You know, it's kind of a refresher on where to find them, how to pull those reports, what they're looking for, and so it's going to be fresh in your mind when you're pulling those same types of things for a longer period of time. And I think it's going to be a good thing for, you know, when it happens. It's not something that's going to happen, you know, overnight. It's going to take several months to do this and get it done, and it'll be a great refresher, I think, for Trish to come in and be able to, she already knows me and this, but it's going to be a great hit-the-ground-running tool for her to be that immersed in something. I think it's going to be a great educational experience for her already unbelievable background, so I think it's great timing. Just need to work on the cost. I just want to reiterate that the Christmas parade is going to be Tuesday, the 9th, from 7:00 to 9:00, and then McCarg Santa Breakfast, which is one of our major fundraisers, is going to be that following Saturday on the 13th. And other than that, I hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving. I'm very thankful to be sitting in the chair I am and be able to help in every way that I can. I'm very thankful for all of the staff that work so very hard for us in the city, and very thankful to live in the city of Radford.
Thank you very much. I did want to also talk a little bit about the Trick or Treat Trail, and thank you to Kim and to Dan McKenny and all of our Main Street businesses. That is one of the highlights of the year, every year. I don't know that there's a time, other than maybe Community Fest, when more people are on Main Street and get a chance to see all the wonderful businesses and all the wonderful business people that we have in downtown. To Kelly's point, the new Pocket Park parking area where the former Subway, Screamers, and Corner Market were down at the corner of Tyler and East Main was in full utilization this year for the first time, and it's going to be kind of exciting to see what that space can become over the next few years as a pocket park and gathering area that could include food trucks, small performances, things along that line, and that should just continue the enhancement of downtown East Main Street as we move forward. I was thrilled to hear that we did get final approval to extend our grant for $700,000 from the Appalachian Regional Commission for another year. You know, in 2018, one of the first things we identified was the need to further enhance East Main Street and all along the business district to try to shore up our economic development. Well, it's 2025, and hopefully by 2026, we'll see that much more tangible progress on this. It's really exciting that we can continue to do that with additional money from outside the city. We've already invested several hundred thousand dollars, and this way we don't lose that credit toward our match to being able to get the 700,000. I think that's really important. I'm also really excited that we have so many wonderful holiday activities coming up in addition to, as I said, many things going on in downtown. Keep your eyes open with our local businesses, help share what they've got going on, and participate. There are multiple holiday markets over the next few weeks. There are things with the farmer's market and the Radford Coffee Company. There's lots of activities, be sure to check that out. And then again, happy holidays, Merry Christmas. We're having a parade on December the 9th, and hopefully we'll see you all out in there. And I believe, and I didn't check this ahead of time, I think December the 3rd is our date for the tree lighting at the library. Does anybody recall specifically if I'm accurate on that? It may be the 2nd, but I can't remember. I think, is it the 2nd or the 3? Is it the 2nd? Okay, so December 2nd will be the tree lighting at the library. That is always a wonderful event. You know, the library is not just about books and programs and things like that, but it truly is a community center as well, and hopefully you can come down and participate and be a part of that. I also wanted to remind folks that November 28th, 2025, is the official date for the 90th anniversary of the Radford Theater. All this month, we've designated it as Radford Theater History Month, and hopefully you can go see a movie down there. I know they've had several special events. They held the Rocky Horror Picture Show the day after Halloween and had a massive crowd down there. That's been going on since I was in high school, and that has always been a real treat for downtown Radford. Hopefully, we can continue to support that theater. It is the oldest, longest-running, first-run, single-screen theater in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that's a pretty important distinction. They definitely continue to do that great work. I'd like to welcome Trish Cox back as well. I think it's exciting to get her in that position. And I'll just say this, about a year ago, we first announced that we had an interim city manager coming in, Craig Meadows, and it was through Craig's initial work that we began to identify some additional challenges as we went through budget season. That also helped us frame the hiring of our current city manager, Todd Meredith. And one of the things that we all noted as part of his process of interviewing and exploration was his embracing of data, statistics, and tracking to be able to know where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. That's an important component, having Craig come on board and identify things, having Todd come on board and identify things, and now having Trish come on board as our chief financial officer. It's never fun going through a process, but it's an important process to go through to get the right players around the table for us to be able to determine exactly what's going on for the city, where we are, where we've been, and where we're going. I think having an audit makes sense. I will point out something that Kelly mentioned. You know, five years may be enough. It may be seven years, it may be 10 years. I think that's something we've got to look at.